Okay, friends, whoa, excuse me. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're actually running a minute or two behind. I'm gonna call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:01 PM. Members present are myself, Mayor Marl, and councilmembers Dylan Girbot, Rhodes, Tahar, and Seo. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, and city superintendent, engineer Ruble, and Councilwoman McClellan is here now as well. For the rest of you who are present in the audience, if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So moved?
Moved by Girbot to approve as submitted, sir. Thank you. Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We are here tonight to discuss just one item, and that is the sale of Lot 20 in the Sauk Trail Business Park. You have included in your packet this evening a memo dated June the 28th, 2016, from city manager Campbell, a memo from Top Gun Advisors dated June the 10th, 2016, a synopsis of the parcels in question from Swisher Commercial Realty, and then a draft agreement for a real estate purchase. And all of those documents will be referenced at some point during this evening's work meeting. Let me just say a few words, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Campbell, if that's all right. This is actually exciting for me because substantive issues involving jobs, new businesses, and expanding our tax base are issues that I believe are of paramount importance and should be the primary focus of city government and city council specifically. This is an issue that I've been familiar with for some time. I think Mr. Junga and Mr. Kirkendall sat down with city staff, myself, and Mayor Protem Rhodes, I believe, back in December around Christmas time. They've done a lot of due diligence and research subsequent to that. And then we met about a month ago, and we also included Councilwoman Tahar in on that meeting. We've had a number of productive and thorough discussions about what their plan and proposal is. Jim has brought with him, or Mr. Junga, excuse me, a group of people. Actually, if I may, before I turn it over to you, can we go around and introduce ourselves? Because I'm sure there's a number of council members who don't know everyone who you brought with you tonight, Mr. Junga, and then conversely, there may be some names you wish to put with faces as it relates to city council members. So, of course, I'll begin. I'm Mayor Marl.
I'm Clerk Royal.
I'm Ms. Tahar.
Heidi McClellan.
I'm Ms. Matthews.
I'm Todd Finch, Ace Hardware District Manager.
I am Mitch Matthews with Best Western Hotels and Resorts.
Mark Kirkendall.
I'm Jim Junga.
I'm Steve Junga.
Jim Messler.
David Rhodes.
Jack Seau.
And Dean Girbot.
I'm Chief, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. All right. Gentlemen, again, we appreciate you all taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us and accommodating us during the six o'clock hour. The only thing I ask before I turn it over to Mr. Campbell for the clerk's benefit because she's taking minutes and because we do record these meetings, if you'd please make sure to speak into a microphone when you're recognized, that would be great. And with that, unless there are questions for me, I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll turn this over very quickly to Mr. Junga and his team. But as the mayor mentioned, the city received a proposal to purchase Lot 20 in the Sauk Trail Business Park through Tony Caparisi, Swisher Realty, the city's real estate representative marketing, and number of the city-owned properties. And so, this proposal came through, had some discussions with Mr. Junga, and so this is kinda where we're at now with a proposal to purchase the property and develop it. Unless there's any questions, and the other thing, too, is so you have the proposal from Top Gun Advisors representing Mr. Junga and his team, and then you also, city attorney Scott Smith drafted, again, using the format that the city's utilized in the last number of parcels that are currently in different various phases of the purchasing of those for the different projects. But those are slightly different. There's a couple items on there. They're a kinda counter, if you will, counter offer to Top Gun Advisors, such as the bearing of the utility lines and then the like. And then, of course, the offer, the purchase price, is in the Top Gun Advisors, but obviously staff doesn't have the authority to make an alternate bid when it comes to the amount. So that's why on the city attorney's draft of the purchase agreement, that's why that's left blank. So, unless there's any questions, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Junga.
First of all, thanks for your hospitality here today and inviting us down. Really, we're here to talk about a project that encompasses really two developments here. One is a boutique hotel, something that through my experience, through the Chamber of Commerce when I was on the board there, and working with Art and some of his predecessors, was a project that seemed to be of high interest to the city. There were some studies done. I've always thought that it would be good to try and make that happen as a realization. And then also to put a next-generation Ace Hardware here in town. We are space limited. Being space limited, it's gonna impact my ability to grow here in town. So, we started this, as Brian had alluded to before, back in December. We actually talked about the property downtown. And we looked at the property, talked with Joe Zabel. There were a number of issues with that property that we were not able to overcome. I'm gonna speak to my agenda up here and jump around a little bit, but the issues with the lot downtown had to do with the size of the lot, noise being as close proximity-wise to the Michigan Avenue. We were looking for height considerations with the hotel that I think downtown would have been an issue. There are environmental issues with that lot. What they are, I don't know, nor does anybody else, at least formally, and the economic consequences that would go along with that. So, we moved from that lot to Lot 20. And I'll throw the first curveball and tell you that we did some extensive layout work on Lot 20 with Midwest Consulting, and frankly, Lot 20's not gonna work. So, we're here to show you a draft of what it would look like on Lot 18. And of course, depending on how this conversation goes, we will revise our offer accordingly. And we'll probably have some leakage into Lot 19 based on the layout. Let me speak a little bit about the hotel, and then I wanna turn it over to Mark and to Mitch here. Celine very much could use a boutique-style hotel, boutique in that 60 to maybe 90 room. And I'm not a hotel guy or a hotel operator, nor do I intend to be. One of the things that I liked about the business model that Mark is here to talk about is it's a co-op business model, and Ace is a co-op business model as well. And a co-op business model's not a franchise. So, what happens in a co-op business model is the guys like me are the stockholders of the company, and the corporation actually reports to us. And frankly, I like that business model a lot better. I think it provides much better incentive to be successful long-term, as opposed to having a company store here in town. It's worked very well for Ace over 93 years, and I think Best Western talks to 70, 70-plus years. The nice thing about this business model, too, is it promotes local ownership and local operation, and we have a great asset here in town to take advantage of who's interested in realizing that kinda dream here in Celine. For talking purposes, Mark has completed a business plan for the hotel. Frankly, it looks, I think, fairly attractive. Site layouts have been done, actually several, and it's been very fluid. Frankly, some of these layouts, the ink's still wet on them, in terms of what we've tried to do to provide you as best a rendition of what we're thinking about. Beyond that, Mark, I'm gonna have you start talking.
Okay.
About the hotel. You tell me what you want.
Mark, Mr. Kirkendall, excuse me, before you get started, I think it would be beneficial for council and for the audience to know a little bit about your background and how extensive it is in the hospitality and hotel management sector. So, if you wouldn't mind mentioning-
Sure, I'd be happy to. I've been a Celine resident for 21 years, and I moved here in '95 with Marriott, and was with Marriott for about seven years, operating the Courtyard in Fairfield and Ann Arbor. Prior to that, I was with my follow-in small hotel company in Texas, and then another company called Jury Ends. And I've had extensive experience operating multiple properties at one time, and large hotels, such as a 300-room hotel, Hilton in Sacramento, California, and a 300-room Marriott in Corpus Christi, Texas. So, I have a vast experience of different levels of operation, small hotels, multiple hotels, and large hotels. Been in the Celine or the Ann Arbor Hotel Market for 21 years, and over three and a half decades of hospitality work. Was in banking for about a year, and then I got in the hotel business. So, I've been in it ever since. Recognized shortly after moving here, almost two decades ago, that Celine would be a good place for a small hotel, and it hasn't been done. I think it's gonna be done. If we don't do it, somebody will. The market is, there's a vast amount of demand here in the Ann Arbor area, in the south side, to support a hotel up to probably 85, 90 rooms. We still haven't pinpointed the exact number of rooms that we're gonna propose for the development, just because of the land questions and so forth, but we're looking at somewhere in that range. The hotel will have a meeting facility that would seat a banquet of about 100 people, a nice, small restaurant and bar. It'll be a very high-quality development, something probably the quality of a Courtyard by Marriott, Hilton Garden Inn, Hyatt Place, that type of facility. But, and I'm gonna let Mitch talk about Best Western a little bit, but what Best Western is gonna do is this concept will allow us to put our own personality into the hotel. It won't be a cookie cutter like a Holiday Inn Express, a Fairfield Inn, or a Courtyard. They demand and dictate what you do, and we will take elements of those brands and build a very quality, well-run hotel here in Celine that will have some local flavor and personality. And I think that's where we get the boutique idea. It's gonna be just a really well-designed and decor that's real in good taste, if you will, and we're just real excited about what we can do with this franchise. The demand in this market is really unbelievable. The Ann Arbor, or the Washtenaw County Ann Arbor market is the strongest market in Michigan hotel-wise, average rate in occupancy, and it's one of the strongest in the upper Midwest, in the eastern segment of the upper Midwest. And that's according to Smith Travel Research, which every franchise, just about every owner of every hotel in the country uses this report that comes out on a monthly basis, and I get the one that's for the whole of Washtenaw County. It's amazing how this area's grown economically overall and in the lodging business. And so, we're poised to do very well on the south side here with lots of corporate business and a lot of leisure business, 50 weekends every year that the market sells out. So, and as Celine residents, you guys all know the different events that happen here, and from NASCAR to Celtic Festival. So, lots of demand, it's very impressive, and we're excited about what we can do with this. So, I'll let Mitch talk a little bit about Best Western now. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Mitch Matthews. I'm with Best Western. As you guys referenced, I cover the entire Midwest for Best Western Development, whether it be new construction project like this one, or we also do conversion opportunities if you have an existing hotel, whether it be independent or with another franchise, we can, they sometimes change flags. To reference Best Western, we've been around, it's our 70th year anniversary. We have over 4,200 hotels, so we're a very large hotel company. As Jim referenced, it's a little bit different than Hilton and Marriott in the sense that it's a membership organization, very similar to a co-op, where once you're a Best Western member, you actually own the company. You literally vote on things like changing the logos, which we recently did last year, to your fee structure. Those are really big advantages. There's no expiring contracts, shorter-term contracts that automatically renew every year, et cetera, et cetera. Just wanted to briefly kinda give you guys a background on where Best Western was and where we've kinda gone through a revamp of our company. Best Western used to have one brand, just Best Western. About seven years ago, we went to Best Western, Best Western Plus, and Best Western Premier. This would likely be a Best Western Plus or a Best Western Premier. We're still working on that together to see how that's gonna work. These brands, Plus and Premier, 80-plus percent new construction. Depending upon the food and beverage component of the hotel, we'll decide what's gonna be the best fit for the market here in Celine. When Mark and Jim first contacted me about this project, I didn't know much about it here, but when Mark and I actually just drove around, and I was blown away by how many businesses, et cetera, were in this area, and I was quite frankly shocked that there weren't multiple hotels here already. So, the fact that, you know, we're working together on this project, and it needs to be extremely successful. As Mark mentioned, the STAR report, you know, for people outside of the hotel industry, essentially just says how good the market is. You know, whether you're in South Bend, Indiana, or Ann Arbor, Champagne, wherever, the numbers here in Ann Arbor, Celine Market are extremely, extremely high, and I think only gonna continue to get better and better. Other than that, I have a presentation I can pass around. You guys are more than welcome to keep and look at some of the pretty pictures at the end of some of the hotels that have been built around the country. As a development team, we're really, really focused on just bringing in new construction opportunities. We've got 150 to 200 deals this year. At least 70% of those are gonna be new construction. We really wanna be in markets that are continually improving and very strong, such as Ann Arbor, Detroit, markets such as those, and we've had a lot of great success. So, happy to be here, and if you guys have any questions specific about Best Western, please let me know. I'm busy going through the slideshow here, I don't wanna bore everybody with hotel details, but you know, you go, you'll see the 4,200 hotels, you'll see that we have over 60% reservation contribution as a brand. What that means is we have people that like to stay at Best Westerns. They're comfortable with the brand. We've been around for 70 years, and the product portfolio continues to improve. One thing that, you know, people are very familiar with is reward members. We have 28 million active reward members that are wanting to stay at Best Western properties. We currently, we used to have a property in Ann Arbor, we no longer have a property there, so currently we have 28 million people potentially looking to stay in this market and know where to stay. I think that's a pretty big number, and will help drive a lot of business to the property here. And then at the end, if you wanna, I don't know if you wanna, you guys wanna see these nice, beautiful hotels that we've opened up and-
Well, one of the things that I thought was important for you guys to be able to see, I have traveled in my lifetime, a couple million miles, stayed in a lot of hotels, and one of the things that I talked to Mark and Mitch about was why Best Western, right? Because it seemed to me to be a little bit of a tired brand. And then I recall that I'd stayed at a Best Western Plus when I was in Hong Kong one time, and it was a beautiful hotel. Well, the Plus hotels have a great boutique showing, and I'm gonna show you some pictures of these hotels, which, the nice thing is, is Mark and Mitch can really tailor this to whatever Celine thinks is gonna be, you know, good-looking and appropriate.
And that's one thing that separates us, too, is we're willing to work with the actual owner and developer, since they are essentially the owners of Best Western, to make sure that this property's gonna fit what you guys feel is a good fit for the area. We're not just gonna make you build our 98-room Best Western Plus prototype and put them in the same, you know, the same box as it's gonna be in Sacramento, California, Austin, Texas, as Ann Arbor. It could be a lot different. And we're open to working with, you know, the developer on that.
So, some of these buildings are just stunning when you look at them. I might just dress up that empty lot down there a little bit, eh?
Kinda when we came out with the Best Western descriptors, I said the Best Western,
the Plus, and the Premier. One thing we did, we kicked out about a, the word we kicked out, lost, whatever, they went their own separate direction, about 1,000 hotels. So, we're up around over 4,500 hotels, now we're about 4,200. So, of those 1,000 hotels that left, we've replaced with about 700, 800 properties that are much higher quality. So, you can imagine, as some of those hotels left in really strong markets, we're able to go to people that wanna build a brand-new one and kind of start the cycle all over again. And quite frankly, a lot of these markets that you're seeing up there, that's exactly what happened.
Is that what happened to your Ann Arbor location? Did you say you don't want anymore?
Correct. That was originally a Holiday Inn that went to Best Western, and now it's a Wyndham Garden, which it's, as these hotel assets get to be 30, 40 years old, not really a great fit for Best Western anymore. So, they kinda go down their own different path.
Okay, thank you. Also, Mitch?
Yep, that's good for me.
Any questions for Mitch?
I do. Is the Sleep Inn that's in Mylan, is that a Best Western brand?
No. So, Best Western is its own company with its own brand. So, Sleep Inn is a part of Choice Hotels. Choice Hotels has, I think, about 12, 13 different brands that are aligned with Comfort Inn, Quality Inn, et cetera. And one thing I didn't touch on was, Best Western, being a membership organization, we won't put a Best Western next to a Best Western Plus, next to a Best Western Premier, because quite frankly, the owners won't allow that. A franchising company that's publicly traded like a Marriott or a Hilton, as you'll see as you go into Ann Arbor, they'll put as many properties as they possibly can on a city corner, because at the end of the day, they answer to the stockholder. You know, and that's what they, and they have to show minimum growth for the stock to go up. We don't have a stock price. We answer to Mark and Jim, and Jim over here. That's who our responsibilities align with, which is, quite frankly, refreshing in the hotel industry, so.
Mr. Girbot.
What's the typical commitment from Best Western in terms of these opening these new facilities? Like, is it a 10-year plan, five-year? When you go back to reassessing, whether you're gonna continue your-
So, as far as that goes, you can sign up to a 20-year-long agreement for a new construction opportunity, if you'd like to. Our standard agreement is four years long, but at the end of the four years, it's at the right of the member to continue on on a yearly basis. The only caveat to that is, we wanna make sure that you're, the owner, is the member, excuse me, is meeting the requirements of the brand. So, as long as you maintain your property to Best Western standards, we will not take your fly from you.
Any other questions? Jim?
So, Mark, do you wanna go through your three-pageer next, or?
Yeah, well, I can highlight a couple things here, a few things that we may have already touched on. Just a little bit more about my background. Most recently, I just completed about 10 years with a local Holiday Inn that I helped develop in Ann Arbor, and my group sold it, and so I'm moving on to hopefully do this. And just a little history of that hotel. It was a Wingate Inn initially, about 12 years ago, that was gonna be located where the Walmart is now. That didn't fly with some folks that we were, you know, we just couldn't get it done, and so a Wingate developer connected with me, and we put the Wingate footprint, the foundation where this Holiday Inn is, and we converted it before we even really started it to a Holiday Inn. So, it's been a big circle here, hoping to get a hotel in this area. So, I've had 10 years of actually developing it, was on the construction site for a year, and getting it open, and operating a very effective hotel in Ann Arbor, one of the top hotels service-wise and actually performance-wise that Ann Arbor's had in quite some time. So, it's a little bit more about my background, where I am, I've been recently. Just a few things here that Jim has up on the screen. It's, again, an upper-mid-scale franchise, not really franchise, but it's like Mitch said, it's a recognized brand with high polyconstruction, decor furnishes, designed to serve a very sophisticated mix of, it's a real diverse mix of demand generators here in this area. And just another thing, we mentioned the market, it's very strong, and there's a lot of detail in this, and I'd be happy to provide everybody a copy of it. I tend to be pretty wordy. But, we're not sure exactly the total size of the building yet, but it'll be somewhere around 50,000 square feet, three to four stories, with a nice mix of amenities that will take care of all the needs of the varied guests that we'll have. Am I too close to it? I'm sorry. Is that better? Okay. This market, Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County, has a real good mix. It's not just a corporate market Monday through Thursday. We have two different types of guests. It says it's corporate Monday through Thursday, and weekends are just phenomenal. So, it's seven days a week that we have business. Some markets, it's just weekend business. We have it all here in Washtenaw County. The list of amenities there will make for a really nice property that will, it'll be self-contained, basically. The restaurant will be designed not to compete with downtown restaurants, it'll be just to, it'll be nice, high-quality, but take care of our hotel guests, and we anticipate, we definitely have a passenger, 14-passenger shuttle to run downtown and back, and to also serve the corporations within about a five-mile radius that need transportation. The next page lists the many different demand generators. One of particular note is Toyota. They have almost 7,000 room nights in the market, 4.2 miles from the site. Thompson Reuters just consolidated all of their offices in Washtenaw County to a location just 2.5 miles from the site on State Road, and just many, many corporate demand generators in this area. And I'm sure most of you know all of the different social, sport events and venues that we have in the area. And there is some government business that exists, so it's a very varied, it's a deep and varied demand. The demand sources here, it's just unbelievable. Just real quick summary here, some financial information. We expect to reach about a total room revenue level of 2 million or so within about two to three years. It could happen a lot quicker. I'm typically very conservative, and when I forecast, so these numbers probably are conservative. Staffing, about 15 full-time, 14 part-time people to staff the hotel, about a half a million dollars in payroll taxes, employee benefits. And Mitch has gone over the franchise affiliation. And local ownership, development group with a lot vested here in the community, so this will be, you know, a property that is hands-on operated by one of the partners. And if there's any information at STAR Report, any of that type of stuff that we have mentioned here, I'd be happy to get copies of it and distribute it. Here's a copy of the STAR Report. You see Washtenaw County, in the middle of the page, the occupancy percent for 2016 so far, this is through May, is 64.4% versus last year of 61.2%. If you go down the list, you'll see that Washtenaw County leads all of these major markets in the Midwest. Chicago is the only market that has a higher average rate than Ann Arbor. And that's why you see some new development happening in Ann Arbor. So it's a very strong market.
Any questions on that, guys?
Mr. Fearbough?
Just for the volume, because I know that Ann Arbor's potentially putting in at least four new hotels right now that I haven't even considered yet for this kind of occupation. How do you feel that's going to impact?
Well, the, a couple of years ago, when the Hilton Garden Inn and the Town Place Suites opened over by the mall, it was not a blip on the radar screen. They just were absorbed. I think these hotels will be absorbed. It will probably have a little bit of an impact. What happened with our, the Holiday Inn that I currently operate, which I won't be here for probably about a month from now, I'll be leaving that hotel. The Holiday Inn Express on Z Road had a little bit of an impact on our occupancy, but we recovered. That's a new hotel that was absorbed readily into the market. And I think the Staybridge Suites, which is going up on the south side of Ninety-four, and the new Town, Hyatt Place that's going up along State Road, the, another one, Homewood Suites is going to be, is being considered up near the new South Campus Athletic Facility that U of M's building. I think they're going to be readily absorbed. We may see a dip in occupancy, but it's not going to, it's not going to dip below sixty percent, which would still keep us in the, a very strong position compared to the rest of the markets around the state.
And then there's a couple of them that are going downtown.
Possibly, yeah. Downtown's been so underserved. If you look tonight, try to stay at the Residence Inn tonight, the rate's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So it's supply and demand.
Any other questions?
Okay, so what I'd like to do is, I'm going to pass out, or have Stephen pass out a couple of drawings here. One is going to be of Lot Twenty. I'm not really going to spend any time on Lot Twenty, but I want to show you why Lot Twenty didn't work. And this is something that came up within the past couple of days.
If you don't have enough, we can share it, Jim.
I think there's twenty copies, so I think there's plenty, Brian.
Oh, that sketch didn't come up on...
Good question for me, while you're passing these out. Have there been thoughts about doing a banquet center that's more than a hundred people? I know there's not really a whole lot of space in town for more than a hundred and fifty people. Is there a market for that at all, or no?
There probably is. We're still massaging that, to see how large you think the hotel should be. Every time I revisit the demand generators and study it, it just feels like we've got to go a little bit bigger. Don't want to overdo it, though. But, so yeah, there is some consideration for that.
So I want to just briefly look at Lot Twenty. Mark and I and Jim have been working on this. The sketch doesn't show the, the screen doesn't show Stephen's, the light sketch, so we're just working the drawings. Everybody's got one to talk about. Everybody see what, the one with Lot Twenty is going to be with the...
With the drawing close to the cul-de-sac.
Jim, just, Mr. Jim, make sure you have the microphone.
That's Plan B.
It would be called Plan B, yes, Plan B. On the right-hand side, you have the margin. We looked at this one, I was fortunate to be brought in and been working with Jim and Mark here, trying to look from the developer's perspective of how to utilize the site capacity, some synergies, so the project would be cost-effective. And obviously, if you start with it being cost-effective, it makes the chance of a success in the long run that much better. And we have a vested interest in the areas, and both of them, I've known Mark for a long time, actually, when he came to Sweeney, we built his first home. We've been talking about this on and off for literally twenty-one years. And we have people that we've built in the Sweeney area, almost nine hundred dwelling units of homes and condos, and we have people all the time asking where they can stay. So it's almost like we built a self-storage, we, light bulb goes on after a while, if everyone keeps asking that there's a need to be served. Now, when we looked at Lot Twenty, which Jim came to me originally, talking about the Ace development there, and I said, "Well, maybe we ought to talk about putting them both together, because there'd be definitely some synergies." However, when you look at this lot, we couldn't get the requirements that you would want for an Ace retail-type store, and also the way you would want to lay out the hotel in a cost-effective manner on this lot, given the configuration. This is actually Lot Twenty and almost half of Lot Nineteen, and then the southern portion of Lot Eighteen and Nineteen to get enough retention. And with the roads and that, it just didn't suit what was going on here very well. So when, after we did our initial layout here, we looked at what, let's call Plan C. I'll go back to Plan B in a minute. D, is it D?
Yeah, I have D.
Ah, D, okay.
I have B and D.
Sorry, these are literally hot off the press.
Yeah, D arrived at five fifteen.
Yeah. So we have Lot D, which is a lot more rectangular, and given both of these, or Plan D, given both of these uses, they lend themselves much better utilization of the property if we have something a little more, geometries work out better. Also, the utilities are already at the edge of this Salt Trail Court, and the natural slope of the site and the storm, we have it there where we're not building, or have to go into further negotiations to figure out how the city's selling a lot that we need, that they need to service. Just to get to the blunt financial part of it, is that if it's a lot with services, trying to lay this out, somehow you have to get down there, where this has them in the corner. So those are kind of the two compelling needs, and a much better utilization of land. So we'll go back to B, which is the original one. You can see number seven, which kind of sets out towards Michigan Avenue would be the proposed Ace Hardware there, and then the Garden Center. And then over to the left, number thirteen was the proposed hotel. And what happens is, when you have a hotel in an L shape, you lose a lot of efficiency of rooms. You can't get any windows in those corner rooms. So you have a pretty inefficient design. It's, you can't, harder to sell those rooms, you have larger rooms, bigger building for the same number of rooms. And also on this one, you can see that detention pond had to extend into the two other lots. Couldn't find a place to put it on there, but the way that cul-de-sac came up, whether you used it or not, the lower part in the very south, you kind of see it outlined in green, that's been recently purchased or is in the process, I'm not exactly sure, of the PS, is it PSMI? PSMI? That, you know, so that's not, that's actually going to be a parking lot there, and could not be utilized for the detention, which would have been a natural area. If you did, we did different layouts, where you put the detention where the hotel was, then you didn't have any way to get to the hotel. It was hidden behind the Ace, or actually took up even more land to get out, basically used all of Nineteen, used two lots to get the same buildings you can get on a, almost a lot and a third on the others by using Eighteen and Nineteen.
Lot Twenty is DOA.
Long, short, we're just...
Yep, it is more, that's what we wanted. And I gave some thought to some of the minutes warning, and frankly, we weren't sure that these layouts were going to work, and it would work right up until about three-thirty today. So we tried to put our best foot forward in terms of what we thought we could live with on Lot Eighteen. I think Mark and Mitch, you guys can speak to this, are comfortable with the general layout of the hotel. I mean, this is still fluid, it might, the hotel might shift forward, the pool center might be on the back south side. It might move the entranceway to the center as opposed to the back of the hotel. I've been playing with the Ace layout all day, but for all intents and purposes, I mean, this, this looks like a very manageable kind of layout for us, very good.
And again, on that, it's manageable, it's a reasonable aesthetic-wise, you can get the green spaces in. It, you can utilize the curb cut, pretty much, you have, obviously, we got to work, everybody has to work with MDOT on the curb cut here, but even where you have the other two entrances and driveways that line up, this is a logical spot. It also can co-locate with the other user of, potential users in the future of the rest of Nineteen and Lot Twenty. The natural drainage pattern puts the detention down here, you have less impervious surface servicing the same square footage of utilized area, or actually occupiable area, which is all good planning practices and good utilization of the city land. You can get more tax dollars for the same, the same eight acres, or however many acres is here. We also have the utilities extended right at the corner. So we, from the standpoint of negotiation, you don't have to say, "Okay, who's going to extend the road?" We really just need a little bit of it to get into the property. Having somebody with the history, we actually, I was one of the partners, and our company was a partner in the original development on the corner. And in that, we actually built the road, and the city reimbursed us for that road. So we were just trying to keep all the possible things that influenced other lots, not hindering them, but keeping the possible costs and some of the negotiation away from that, just trying to utilize the actual land to work in a cost-effective and good manner. And I think it's a good utilization. We have office, these are right next to it, you have the retail up front, and it seems to be a pretty good utilization of everything there.
Mr. Heiser, can I get a question in your councilman's CEO's patient?
Oh, sorry, I didn't...
No, no, it's quite all right.
That's right. Looks like a lot of your critical thinking here surrounds the footprint that's available to use for a particular lot size. Mr. Rubel, do our zoning requirements limit the height of the building? Because I see this calls for a four-story building.
Well, we, I'll be agendaing tonight to get you approved of the U V ordinance.
Okay.
So there's your answer. I have a flexibility for another thing, including the high consent access to the place you're wanting properly. So certainly, the client commission would be sent here to review your specific...
One thing that does happen in this, it does drop from the Michigan Avenue elevation to the back almost ten feet. So...
Kind of hits one story.
Right. If you figure you have to have windows in here, and you really don't want in a hotel to have window wells, you're going to have at least half a story that could be in that backside. And then, given the way that grade is, it would look closer to a three, three-plus story. And you can do some things by not taking your roof elevations and keeping them flat, put the manser that comes down to the top of the top-story window, and that kind of compresses that building down a little bit. It doesn't look quite as tall. Sometimes you want to expand, make it look higher, sometimes you want to make it look shorter, and here we could do that.
Additional questions, Mr. Seale?
That's all.
Any other questions? Ms. Dillon?
Does the hotel have any concerns about not being roadside?
No, no, I think this is going to be close enough, it'll have a good story to the signage, and I don't, I don't think it needs to be any closer than I can get up there to Michigan.
And it's, I'm trying to figure this out, the parking, is there ample parking to accommodate both?
Nice, I have to ask the other question, there's too much parking.
That is probably closer to the answer, is that your, if you go to the current, the current ordinance, the first thing I thought is way overparked.
Okay.
Way overparked.
That would be a fact as well.
Obviously, Mark's had a lot of experience, and Midwestern Consulting has, and Jim has the years in business there, he can, you have approximately a hundred spots out in front of your area right now. And at least in talking about this, we're looking at maybe a maximum that's ever been used, his is fifty. You figure you have a safety margin of ten, you know, it just, the requirements are very, you have very generous parking requirements.
Mr. Rubel, do you have a comment on that point?
Well, regarding the parking, how many spaces for large trucks driving through and semi, so they're up for a big parking?
Trucks that would service our business, Gary, or are you talking about guys trying to find a good spot for...
There are people, a lot of trucks have to be in there as well, and they don't have a place to stop and park.
It's... Yeah. We will probably have a truck driver occasionally, but I don't see that being a, this would be the type of hotel that typically truck drivers would stay in. I don't think it's going to be a roadside-type hotel with truck drivers. We will get, okay, we do at the Holiday Inn in Ann Arbor. And the amount of parking in the space that's there, I don't anticipate a truck here being out there.
Kind of built on the, for the hotel portion, we require one, every room we require one parking space. So we haven't really got too great a piece of, how many spots, total there would be, but I don't see that being a big issue on this lot.
How about food service and so on for the hotel? You mentioned you're going to have a hundred-person facility there for banquets and so on, and obviously, a restaurant of some size. How would, where would your food service and so on receive...
Regarding parking? The food service facility, the restaurant and bar will cater mainly to the hotel guests, and the parking will be there already for those folks.
I'm talking about food deliveries currently.
Oh, deliveries. We will have, we'll have one stop with a truck once a week, to Cisco, and Jim's addressed the Ace delivery in this design, too.
I see that. Typically, they have a drive of some kind around behind the building. You know, it will allow for...
Yeah, it can very well be in the front or the side. It's not, it doesn't happen very often once a week.
I'd say most hotels, or at least a lot of hotels, those come right from the front to the back, a lot of the way out.
Okay.
Just to answer your question, too, about the parking, it's a hundred and sixty-nine parking spots on here, and then there's another area for twenty-six deferred that you could take on some of these extended islands and stuff.
Again, approximately, how many rooms in the hotel are we talking about?
A minimum of sixty-five, probably a maximum of ninety. A lot of parking.
Yeah. It's about sixty for the Ace and a hundred for the hotel, roughly.
Councilman Dillon, did you have additional questions? Please make sure you use the microphone. Thank you.
My biggest concern is that the Ace is at the roadside, the entire business, including the Garden Center, and the hotel almost seems like it's masked over to the side. And I'm just concerned about visibility, and people knowing that it's there. I mean, you're traveling at fifty miles an hour down that road, are people going to even notice it's there?
Well, we don't anticipate the market being primarily for people driving through Sweeney. It's going to be marketed and proactive sales effort will be to the corporations that exist out in this area, and south side of Ann Arbor. The events that are held here, people usually make their reservations in advance, or anywhere with a pass card, tell the festival, the football games, so visibility... So visibility, alcohol visibility is actually gonna be a problem anyway.
What I would point out to you is if you look at Jim's development here to the east, the hotel is gonna be proud of that to the north, and I suspect by the time we're done, the hotel's gonna actually be where the pool area is. But you put that hotel building up to where the pool area is-
Okay.
Make it four stories tall and you have the armpits.
If, if you want it to be some of the blend, we'll, we'll go in here, developer end of it, is that you're setting at the eve height for the height of the ACE roof. And if you take this three, let's call it a three and a half story building, and we can make it look anywhere from three and a half stories to almost four and a half stories on how you treat the roof line of it. Even at, let's keep the minimum, you're still about fifteen feet higher than this roof line, and you're gonna be almost eighteen to twenty feet higher than the gateway center, the office buildings. So you'll notice the building and it'll be a hundred, two hundred feet long. So I think it fits in pretty nice. It gives you a little bit of step through there. It isn't all, one doesn't look like a factory, or it doesn't look like one big office building. You will have a nice variation there.
Nothing else? It's a great question, but I, I just did the exact same thing. So I, I literally drove down to the side, got out of the car and looked at it to make sure it won't be prominent enough. Because yes, there's, you know, Mark and his sales efforts are gonna be tremendous and drive most of the business, but you also wanna attract that person out on the highway. You know, from a developer standpoint, from Best Western, we wanna make sure we are seen and so forth. Wouldn't they shift it up just a little bit and I think we're gonna move the pool to the other side, it, it will be armpits. And the things you can do with the lighting and the exterior and the new design will be, will be a good property.
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Dillon?
I just wanted two other things just quickly on amenities for the hotel. Is, is your target, it's the corporate, you know, the business traveler? That's who you're gearing it to for the most part?
Yeah, the corporate market here.
Okay. And I, I too would be in favor of having a larger banquet facility because that's, planning events is very difficult in this area to accommodate. And there's a huge demand for it.
Working on, on the exact size, but those are great comments and great questions that sort of take into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Gierbach?
My questions just have to do with some of the setbacks and so forth. I know when we developed this area, we were really concerned about the gateway plan and the way these were gonna be developed. Looking at the way the drives are approached and everything, it seems like those are cut further into the setback than what the other developments are on both sides of it. So that would be my one concern from a planning perspective, is that we try to maintain that consistency across there because that was partly designed, that was planned twenty or so many years ago, has been very consistent in what Mr. Heiser's done on his other development. The other question, and I do like on here, is if we do have to have a curb cut into Michigan Avenue, we have the one where it doesn't allow left-hand turns out onto Michigan Avenue, that would be a major concern for any kind of traffic on that, especially when we're gonna have five lanes cutting across that, and the traffic's just getting worse and worse. But for me, it's really is that concern of maintaining the setback, the green space and so forth, because that was part of the thing that I know individuals have looked at and trying to be consistent with how that town, we have that transition as we go through town and don't look like a major development or a commercial strip again, so.
That's it, Mr. Gierbach? Thank you, sir. Let's, Ms. Dillon, if you wouldn't mind passing the microphone down, we'll start with Councilwoman Tarr and then transition to Councilwoman McCall.
So I was going to comment along the same lines as Mr. Gierbach about the, about the gateway aspect to the city of, of this part of the road. And to say that I, I, first of all, I like the fact in this design that the parking is not right up at the road, it's back behind the buildings, and that, I'd, I'd like to compliment you on that. And, and say that the look and feel of this property as you approach the city, I think, is, is an important aspect as well. You can't exactly quantify that, but I'm also encouraged by the fact that the Best Western Plus facilities can be customized to the community, and I think that's a really important point.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I would echo what she had to say as well, but the aesthetics of, I mean, it's, if it's gonna be a four-story building and it's the, kind of one of the first things that we're gonna see as you're coming into town, I think that's pretty important. My question is about the ACE, actually. Where is the entrance to the store? Is it on the-
On the south side.
South side, okay. So, kind of on the back side of Michigan Ave, right?
Correct.
Okay. So how, what kind of facade is it gonna have on the Michigan Ave side? Do you have a concept for that yet?
I'm not sure I'm that far.
Okay.
I mean, it, it would certainly be an attractive facade. It's gonna be about the same height of the facility that I would have currently. Arguably, it might be a couple feet shorter, but it'll, it'll be an attractive, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in making sure people wanna come in.
Okay. I just wonder, if, we're not gonna be looking at the back of the buil, I mean, we're going at the back of the building, but it's not gonna look like we're looking at the back-
I don't know how to dress it up.
Okay.
Of course, part of the, part of the interest and part of my contingencies here too are to be able to put a, a sign on that building so people know they're, they're not gonna miss ACE hardware when they come to town.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions at this time? Mr. Mayor, for Tim Rhodes?
First of all, I, I wanna say how pleased I am to see a hotel coming to Celine finally, after twenty-some years, and it's always been high on the wish list, it's always showing up on the swats that we've done. And I'm, and I'm also glad that it's not a cookie cutter kind of a hotel. So thank you for that, and the new businesses that it's gonna bring, and whatever Mr. Junga does to expand his ACE hardware and bring in more jobs, I'm thankful for that also. Question that I had, since you're utilizing all of lot eight, what is currently lot eighteen and part of what is lot nineteen, are you purchasing nineteen also, or are you going to request the city reallocate boundaries?
So I'll revise my offer, you know, based on how we finish at the meeting here. I would, I would think that what we'll do is we will look to purchase eighteen and part of nineteen.
Okay, and then we'll have to-
I don't need all of nineteen there.
Yeah, we'll have to decide if that leaves nineteen marketable for us or not.
I understand.
Yeah. Or if we just end up with one other large parcel down there.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, do you have, do you wanna continue your presentation? Do you have anything left to, to share or talk about?
We have a ton of information that we can certainly warn you with. Is there anything particular to the hardware store or private to the, that you guys wanna hear about?
Mr. Seale?
A number of my colleagues have made comments about how they, they appreciate this kind of, of a development coming in light of recent discussions we've had about a potential movie theater across the street, some of the restaurants that are around there and so on. I know my wife and I travel more frequently now that I'm retired and we have other things to do with our lives many times. And we frequently look for those kind of amenities nearby a hotel where we might be staying. I know this last week, we were out of town, we stayed in a hotel, it was kind of way out, it was on the main road, but there was nothing else around. Had to travel some distance to go to a hotel, had to travel some distance to go to a, to a drugstore and to a supermarket and so on. And this has all those kinds of things right nearby, and I think the synergy of it all works well. So again, I think it's a good spot, I think it, it looks better than some of the others we've seen over the years, come before planning and so on, or some of the concepts we've heard about. I think it's a good idea, I like it. And I'm glad to see our local businessmen involved in it.
Yeah, so one, one of the things that I heard about from you in a previous meeting, in the previous meeting that I attended, was your longer-term plans for owning the business and family involvement and so on, that perhaps others would benefit from hearing about.
Well, I suspect, I, I suspect this would apply to both Mark and myself. Co-op style businesses tend to be family-driven businesses, and in most cases, they tend to be generational. And Stephen's not here by accident, I mean, Stephen's the latest owner of ACE Hardware. When I, when I choose to transition out, which will be terribly many years, but something down the road. I, what I was most taken by, we've been very fortunate as ACE Hardware, I mean, we've got a, by and large, a top ten percent performing store out of five thousand stores since we opened our doors. And I've got strong factors to show in our growth and our performance. And I, I was blessed to go to a couple of these platinum-type, where the top ten percent could go, be rewarded for a couple of nights, listen to great speakers. And I was struck, because there were five hundred businesses there, and they had us all stand, and we got to sit down based on how long we were there, and of course, Dan and I were the first ones to leave. But what I saw was families that were standing, and there were sons, and fathers, grandfathers, and great-grandfathers sitting there. And so, part of my interest here is to establish a footprint that this business can survive and succeed on for the next fifty-plus years. And I think we're trying to design the elements into the business to give ourselves, given what we can do that, given what the Celine market has to offer. Best Western side, Mark's got a bunch of kids too, but I don't know if any of them got one.
Well, a couple of them.
May. They, they've worked with me in the, in the business and, and there's certainly that possibility, and I, I'd like to see it.
Fortunately, my kids are in the area and they'll probably invest in the hotel and sign it up, so.
Councilwoman Dillon, did you have a comment or question?
I do, I have a couple of quick questions. First, Mr. Junga, you indicated that you're looking to put signage on your actual building, not just roadside?
Correct.
Okay. Would the hotel want that also?
Yes.
And, okay. And also, no, that's just a roadside, it's not on the building. What is the timeframe for this project?
So for the hotel, the hotel is fairly immediate. Frankly, we have all the components in place. I mean, we have to tie up remaining capital. We've already seen a lender on this, so somebody that is supposed to be managing the land on this, who's fairly optimistic on the lending side of it. We've gotta put in an application, get it approved by the board at Best Western Plus, they're already aware, they're waiting on us. This thing's just taking some time to evolve. So the hotel side of it is very dynamic. I have a lease that extends for a little over three years. I wouldn't plan to start my development for about thirty months. But you can see the hotel as quick as we can get it up. We'll see the ACE hardware sometime in the next two or three years.
Can we leave this in an attractive manner as we work our way through, through this? That's the nice part of everyone coming to the table at the beginning, is we don't have to go back when we go to do the ACE. Yeah, it's almost like building, I won't say a shed, but we'll have all the infrastructure in place, all we have to do is actually put the building in.
Now that this has become a more public conversation, and I talked to Bayla this morning, Bayla Silbotes, who represents Bill, Chuck Reinhardt, and Jim Douglas, who are the owners of the strip that I have. I recognize that I'm an anchor in that strip. I mean, that strip was troubled when I got there, and I really don't wanna see it become in trouble when I leave. That's a big investment for those guys. So my intention, I, I told Bayla, depending on how this proceeds and if it's approved, at that point, they need time to try and find somebody to replace me. And if they're able to do that in advance of the timeframe, so they, it will work soon enough. But I'm gonna stay true to my commitments as well, and try and be above board, give these guys as much time to find a replacement for us in the past.
Any other questions, Councilwoman?
No, thank you very much.
Mr. Rhodes, yeah?
Yeah, just a comment, since this new location is across the street from the Rensselaar Farm, I, I wonder if some white fencing along Michigan Avenue on your side, sort of similar to the look of the farm, might be, might be worthwhile as people are coming into town. And it's kind of our gateway. Can we, we have somebody who gets to fence, paint fences over here, or Girl Scouts. 'Cause I don't imagine you wanna put your buildings up to look like a barn.
No, no, but I'd be wide open to, to any suggestions like that, to try and help people add log and stuff. I, I don't know about you guys, but I get a lot of people in my store, and most of the people that know hardware stores coming into the city may be got afraid of my store. And that is gonna change. I mean, while I'm, while I'm running the business, I don't see it in a basic different way, anywhere in there, it'll break.
Well, let me try and summarize, and then perhaps we can transition to talking a little bit about the, the purchase agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I had, I'm double booked tonight, I have to leave for the next meetings.
We appreciate you being here, Jim. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And if my summarization is, is incorrect, I hope my colleagues will, will interject, but let me say, in, in some of these comments I alluded to in my, my opening remarks, and I, I should preface, I, I have a habit of, of not wearing my emotions on my sleeve and being sort of stoic, but I'm extremely excited about this. My face may not show it, but it, it, it's the truth. And it's been stated numerous times this evening, a, a hotel, an inn, a bed and breakfast has been a target business for this community for, for decades. And so I was, I was really delighted when, when Mr. Junga and Mr. Kirkendall came to, to meet with staff and I back in December. And I, I didn't mean to hound you gentlemen, but I think my, my emails and pestering are indicative of, of how good something like this would be for our community. So I think a standalone ACE hardware that becomes a, a generational family business is not only good for, for the Jungas, but ultimately good for the Celine community and makes perfect business sense. And while I would have loved to have seen a boutique hotel downtown, I think it fits well on, on lot eighteen. And actually, like Councilwoman Tarr, and I understand this is, this is very preliminary, and I'm not gonna hold you to anything, but the current layout that's proposed, I like a lot because it does reserve the parking in the rear. And it reminds me a little bit, and I was just there this past Friday, of the Arbor Hills development across from the Whole Foods on Wasna, which is very nicely done because again, all of that parking, and the parking is pretty excessive to accommodate those businesses, is all in the rear, and what you see is the facade, a very contemporary yet soft facade of, of the, the development. So again, I think this is a great proposal. I'm, I'm very eager to work with you and to move expeditiously to make it happen, especially the hotel component, because I think there's a great need in the community. So I, I think that's the consensus and that's the perspective I'm hearing from my council colleagues, unless I hear any objections, that people are pretty pleased with what's being proposed. Okay, very good. Can we transition and maybe have a focused conversation for the next twenty minutes on, on the purchase agreement and how we can get the ball rolling? Does that sound good, gentlemen? Anything else you wanna add or mention? No? Okay. Do you wanna comment initially on the purchase agreement? I know this is something that, that Scott has worked on.
Sure, I, I guess the question I have for Mr. Junga is if they're gonna come back with a different proposal, I don't know if they're gonna have different requirements or, so I don't, I, I don't wanna put you on this kind of hot, hot spot, if, hot seat, if you will, as you mentioned, that you'll be coming, since it's a different lot and that type of thing, that you'll be coming back modifying with, or modify proposals. So I don't know if you're prepared to, to speak to-
So what I'll do is, I'll, I'll talk to Greg Klieber, who's a friend of mine for thirty years, who has helped me with mullet materials up in the industrial park when we moved him there, and helped me with a lot of JCI developments. They're a good crew. I'll, I'll talk to Greg. I talked to him late last week and said, hang tight, let's get through this work session. I mean, this is a very dynamic situation. I will, I will revise our offer, put it in the form of lot eighteen, part of lot nineteen. There's part, there's some contingencies, at least one or two contingencies in that lot that are in that previous proposal that don't apply. And I don't have to hook up to our current, our current strip. So I'll strike that. I'll look at the other ones, and I may have to add one or two that pertain to this particular lot. So it's fairly fresh. I would say I'll have a proposal back in to you guys by the end of the week. I would say I'll have a proposal back into you guys by the end of the week, maybe sooner, but by the end of the week, very possibly within 48 hours.
So we could, if, if that's the case, Mr. Junga, then, I think I mentioned this to you when we met about a month ago, because of the 4th of July holiday, our meetings this month are back-to-back, so we'll meet again next Monday, but assuming that you can get it to us by the end of the week, it could be added at a minimum as a discussion item for next Monday. So we'll keep the ball rolling and get some...
I will commit to you to have, have it by the end of the week.
Okay, very good.
I mean, he's capable of doing it in about 24 hours until I give us time to go through the detail.
Very good. Mr. Rhodes, you want to make sure you get the microphone there from Mr. Steele?
Yeah, we need to buy more of these. What's the internal city process for reallocating boundaries on our properties?
Well, we'd, we'd be working, obviously, with building engineering and accessory's office, and, and since it's platted, it's a platted industrial park, so there are a couple other steps involved, but, but that's, that's where we would start in working with the city attorney's office.
And I'm assuming even at some point in time, it would end up coming to council for approval, or...
Oh, absolutely.
...by the commission, or, you know, because that's, that's another thing that has to happen. I'm assuming your offer is going to be contingent upon that reallocation of boundaries.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, to me, it would be similar to, to these, as you may recall, these other parcels of property of the city, you know, there's a due diligence period, and along with the due diligence, the, the list of contingencies that, you know, whether it's rezoning, or, or setback, whatever happens to be that those, that list of items, and some projects require, you know, less contingencies, and some require more. But, but we would go through and, you know, write down to, you know, the final site plan, final site plan approval, excuse me, on those types of things, those would be, I'm sure would be, that's, we would include those, that's the format that we utilize, so.
Okay, and, and off the top of your head, there, there was nothing in your, that you recall in the original establishment of that, you know, that area, that would preclude us from changing boundaries, or numbers of sizes of lots, or anything?
Well, the, I, yeah, yeah, I, I don't think so, but I'd have to double check, again, this is the first that we're hearing of it as well, so, so we'll, we'll go back and do our due diligence, and make sure whatever steps we need to, to do, we'll do.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you, since, since you brought it up, Mr. Rhodes, and it's an excellent point, that assuming we find out from legal counsel that there's no inherent barriers to prevent us from moving forward, I have no problem dividing that lot and then taking that remaining half and attaching it to Lot 11, if that's what's required to get this, to make this happen.
I just know there's some steps we have to do.
Right, right, that's a good point. Other questions or comments? So we will expect then, and again, if this is too rigid, you know, you, you tell me, but we'll expect something then by the end of the week that we can consider as a discussion item at our next council meeting, which would be a week from today.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else that you would like to share, gentlemen?
Can I ask a, a random question, sort of being new to this? When you guys had this Greenway entry idea thought up, was there kind of a vision in mind that you were trying to achieve, or some sort of kind of idea that you wanted to...
There's a... If you agree, everyone's tenure except for Mr....
Okay, okay.
There's a specific, there's a specific plan that we had developed at a, who was it that developed? I don't think it was Quinn and Evans, but the company developed the whole plan, and that's why when you see, like, CVS, and the shopping center, Suck Trail, and all those other developments, even...
Even the office buildings that Mr. Ruben's developed?
Right. All of that was designed to kind of keep even with the farm approach, and so that all looks like that. So it's all consistent there, and there is that kind of development, so you just talk with Mr. Ruben, he'll be able to bring you on to that. It's just kind of the idea of trying to keep more of that heritage, the aspect of what we've had in the Celine, to try and keep our farm history and so forth.
And I do want to note, on, on that particular issue, that every meeting or interaction I've had with Mr. Kirchendahl or Mr. Junga, the importance of look and feel and aesthetics has always been emphasized by them, proactively. It didn't require me soliciting it from them, they understand the importance, so I, it's a, the point is well-taken, but I have no doubt that, that's something that they'll be cognizant of and very sensitive of as we move forward. Any other questions from council? Mr. Hart, just make sure you get the microphone.
So, when, when it comes to the redistribution of the lot lines, I would, I wonder if we would also consult with Mr. Capparisi about, about how that, how marketable what's left might be, and how that might be presented, if that might factor into exactly how we do the, do the divisions.
Tony, I don't want me to put you on the spot, do you want to comment?
Yeah, no, just my, my initial thought is that I think it would be best to leave it partial lot, though that it probably ended up in two and a half acre size would be an ideal size for a restaurant.
But you still think even that, that half section is, is marketable?
Depending on how the final lot, you know, how it finally gets divided up, yeah, I think if it's anywhere at, you know, more than two, two and a half acres, I'd say...
It's a, it's a lot more than, than half. I mean, I think, I think of the way it's drawn, it's 115 feet, and that, that lot is 400-plus feet in front of it, so you're probably talking a little more, maybe around a quarter of a lot.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. Is that it, Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbach?
And the only one thing I want to make sure, as we plan for the future, that because we are selling this property differently than we intended, we're not going to have the significant of, of taxes that we had with the idea of the business property tax and so forth, and personal property taxes. So when that road is developed, I'm concerned from the perspective of the city taking on that cost, even though the intent when we did it initially was that we would recover that through personal property tax. So, there needs to be consideration, and I know this is prime property from what it is from a retail perspective, that we need to look forward of what there potentially may be additional costs, not born on the city, but born on the property owners as that gets developed. So, just an FYI.
Anything else, gentlemen? Do you feel like, from your perspective, it's clear what the next step is from the city of Celine? And I think it's unanimous that we're very supportive and very excited about what's being proposed.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
All right. We're going to transition real quick to some public comments, then, we might actually get out of here a little bit early. If you want to hang tight, but you're welcome to leave. We transition now to public comments under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward and make comment or question of city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess. A little bit of history, when the Ford and Order Company was built in the early '70s, there was a motel on this property proposed, and it didn't go over well with the council. They thought somebody would be just renting it for six hours or something. Anyway, there, it's really going to be a great place, because we have seniors, many seniors that have independent living, and their friends and their family come, so I'm really excited. My concern is the sign. The sign is great, but do you ever notice when you get near 23, that huge sign that's still there, that was there 40 years ago? I guess I would hope that there's some kind of money in escrow, in case that sign never has to be removed. The other thing is the fire department. When we're talking about parking, I understand as far as these, they have plenty of room with the pallets of soil and everything, but the fire department, when we're talking about a fire, they have to bring in a fire truck. So when they're talking about your, how the fire and the lanes are going, and this type of thing, I would like to have the police, the fire chief, look at these designs with a kind of comment early, and of course, I know Pittsfield has a ladder truck. But those are my concerns as far as the safety of everybody, with the kitchens, with that, the traffic pattern, if that's important. I know it's going to be great for graduations, weddings, and, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional public comments? There are no additional public comments, and the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at, what do we got here? Seven, let's say 7:22 PM. Moved by Tarr, seconded by CEO. All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.